Open the meeting of the Town of Ashburnham Board of Selectmen Monday, March 1st, 2021. It's a virtual Zoom meeting, so any votes will be taken by roll call. Like to call the meeting to order? And it's 6:30. Can I have an approval of the agenda, please?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen's yes.
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Is there anybody in the crowd tonight that would like to address the board on anything not on the agenda? All right. Claire's shaking her head, so we're good. We'll go right to the town administrators update.
Chairman, thank you. I just want to thank everyone who came out. We had a special town meeting last week and all 12 articles were approved. So I want to thank everyone who showed up for that and getting that completed. COVID, we had 12 cases reported last week. That's kind of steady where we've been. We're still close to the public here, but if you need to come in, just call, make an appointment. Hopefully fairly soon, we can start moving towards opening the doors. For all you out there that have motor vehicle excise taxes still due, they're due March 15th. You can drop them off at the box outside town hall, mail them. Or if you have to pay cash, call the collector's office, make an appointment, and they'll schedule that you can come in and pay in cash if you want to. So on my last note, I received a notice that the DPW Director, Steve Nims, will be retiring on April 9th. And I want to thank Steve for all his support and dedication to the Town of Ashburnham for the past 34 years. That's some longevity that you don't see too often. So I want to thank Steve for all the help and effort that he's put into working in town and the support he's given me while I've been here. So he'll be missed, but he still hopefully will stay in contact with me so I can tap into his knowledge and database down the road. And that's all I have for our town administrator report.
All right. Anybody got any questions for Brian?
Yeah, sure. Brian, if you could just, well, first of all, I want to say the same thing. You know, hey, I'm very appreciative of everything that Steve Nims has done for our community. And it'll be a sad day when he departs, but we understand that, you know, he's starting the next adventure of life, retirement. So wish him all the best. We'll see him before then, I'm sure. You attended the MVP.
He is retiring.
Excuse me? Steve, you missed that. Steve.
No, that was Roger.
Yeah. You had attended the MVP meeting. Can you just give us a brief update on that?
Sure. So there are, I think there's around 25 participants from the town and people active in town. And they broke you into small groups to discuss a variety of things, mainly on how environmental impacts can affect the town, either environmental infrastructure and society. So we broke up into groups of five or so people and they took notes. The first round was just identifying resources and potential problems that you think could happen in town. And the next meeting will be this Thursday. And that'll be, you know, how do we actively try to correct the problems or get better prepared? You know, I think we all saw what's happened in Texas. And, you know, we're kind of trying to prepare for what kind of incidents would happen here and how we could plan for those. Obviously, we have a lot of water and dams and a lot of, a lot of, a lot of issues in town. I think that seems to be the one that's the forefront here on how do we prevent any issues regarding water, either flooding, droughts, you know, of that nature. But the workshop went from 8:30 to 12:30 last Wednesday, and this Thursday, it's another one from 8:30 to 12:30 for those people.
I just wanted to say I got a couple of calls, lots of positive feedback. So I wanted to get your opinion on that. And I don't know what materials, you know, if there was anything specific. I know there was a PowerPoint presentation. Wondering, you know, we had talked about having a tab, you know, like under a board or committee or whatever, from municipal vulnerability core team or whatever you want to call it. Maybe we could put that, that PowerPoint up. It might just be nice information so people know what everyone's working on.
Maybe after the second session, they didn't want their PowerPoint really out there yet. They wanted each group still to kind of maintain the individual setups and thought process. They were afraid that the PowerPoint might lean everyone towards one direction and they want you to kind of be free thinking during this process. But when it's all said and done, they're going to send the PowerPoints over and I'll see if that's something we can put out there. If not, the report, once it's done, will definitely be available to the public.
Yeah, no, I heard that there were going to be listening sessions since the Board of Selectmen weren't able to attend the first session. I heard that from Marshall that there would be listening sessions for the public for those who were not in attendance for the workshop. So I thought that that might be helpful, encourage people to attend.
Marshall's the chairman, so you can, you could check with him. But I know the meeting was not recorded because it's not a public meeting by any means. So they did not record it. They took notes for the groups.
Yeah, yeah.
Leo, Roger has his hand up. Roger, wait.
He's blanked out on my screen. Go ahead, Roger.
Nope, I didn't have anything. Sorry about that.
Okay. Brian, isn't the next meeting Wednesday?
Oh, sorry. It's Wednesday. Yeah, it was last Thursday and it's this Wednesday. Thank you, Leo. It's this Wednesday. Yep.
I was going to say, I might be losing it here.
No, you're not. I think I am. I think that's, that's becoming quite evident lately, to tell you the truth.
Are you going to be able to attend, Leo?
This one being Wednesday, no.
Yeah, I don't know if another board member could attend. I have a meeting at 11:00, so is it running to 12:30?
Correct.
Yeah, so I can't stay for the whole thing, but Bill, would you be available or no?
No, workday for me on Wednesday, I've actually got an hour-long presentation I have to make to the owner of the company, so.
Yep.
It's nine to like 10 and 10:30, something like that. I'll be tied up, so.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I had. Yeah.
So Brian will be representing us.
I was just asked, the people who contact me wanted to know why Board of Selectmen was not there. That's why I ask.
We've got people.
Yeah, exactly. Anything from you, Bill, to ask Brian?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Now we will move on to a presentation by the company See Click Fix It. And that's going to be with John May. So John, if you want to unmute yourself and go ahead.
Good evening. Thanks, everybody, for joining. John Mayo, See Click Fix. We are part of Civic Plus. For those who may not be familiar, See Click Fix is a 311 solution that can assist with opening up a two-way communication between your constituents, citizens, and the town to give them a voice to report not emergency, quality of life issues, and a way on your backend to workflow those issues to the appropriate departments and open up some visibility so that, you know, you can see the status of where those issues are and your citizens can see where the statuses are as well and give them closure when an issue is resolved. So I'm just going to share my screen if that is okay with you.
Yep.
All right. I think I just may need to be given access to share. Oh, there it goes. All right. Is everybody able to see my screen?
We can.
Okay. And thank you, Bill, and I think spoke a few, maybe a month or so ago. So thanks, Bill, for bringing me on, showcase this a little bit more to everybody tonight. So the problem that we solve for, what we speak with most cities, towns, counties that we work with, is that you have all your citizens out there and they have different issues that they're looking to report that they see around town from road issues, graffiti, blight issues, maybe down tree limbs, traffic issues. And everybody has their own comfort level for how they want to report those issues. So they may want to walk in, tell somebody in person, go onto their phone and report it, pick up the telephone, call somebody, maybe even write an email or possibly even write a letter. And then on the backend of the town, you're left with getting that issue to the appropriate department, getting it assigned to the appropriate person. And then on the backend as well, you may have other systems that you need to work with as well, such as asset management permitting systems. So this is really the problem that See Click Fix solves for. So we aim to be that one source hub of communication between your citizens and the town. So we do this in the couple of different tools we offer to the citizen side of it. We provide citizens with iOS and Android app, a call taker tool, so when they call in issues, web portal, so through your website. We also give a way to, you can notify your citizens when there's an event coming up or maybe a road closure, something to that nature. Give your citizens a way that they can just be interested in, maybe where they just live or maybe where they work, they can just focus on certain areas of issues. And on the town side of it, we give you similar tools with the desktop app, mobile web app, ability to assign issues, re-categorize issues if they came into a wrong department, ability to allow for public commenting or internal commenting, so that there are things you want to just keep internal. We also have duplicate detection, so to spot if you have two of the same issues out there, assist with requests and work orders and resources, so giving you a workflow system on the backend. Over to the right here are some of our top integrations. We integrate with just over 25 different softwares right now. So these are some of the top, most popular out there, so different types of codes, permitting systems, essentially making it so if you have departments using those systems already, they can still live in those systems, close issues, open issues, and they can still go back out to the See Click Fix side. So this is kind of just a bit of a high level. Any questions you might have off the top there? I can save questions till the end as well. Maybe that'll work. Work is easier. So a little background to See Click Fix, we've been around for just over 14 years. We have just over 425 clients now and 20% of our clients have come from a competitor or competitors. We really work on the citizen experience, so we are happy with our four and a half average star rating from iOS and Android market, and that's with over a few thousand ratings. Technologies that you need to See Click Fix are duplicate detection and jurisdictional toggling. Included with our system is full lifecycle CRM for request management, work order management. And a third of our issues resolved currently come through an integrated system. So with that being said, I'm just going to jump into kind of what our software looks like in the website, on the app, on the phone call ticker interface, kind of what is included with the tool. So this is where See Click Fix would live on a website. So this is Madison, New Jersey. On their home landing page, we have a report, reporter concern right at the top. We have Cambridge, Mass, who has reported an issue online, so just slightly different ways to put it right on the website there. When you're to click on the website there or to click on that reporter concern tab, it would take you to a page like this where you can, from a desktop, you can type in your address. You can select from category, request category types. And you could see this center spot here is what that experience looks like on the mobile app. So we make it so it's a universal feel, so if you're used to reporting on the website versus the app, it's going to feel the same when you're between the two. We also know that people get lost when they get to a website. Sometimes they might miss that reporter concern at the front page. So we make our app embeddable, so it'll feel like it's part of your website. It's not going to open up a second window. In this case, this person was looking for graffiti issues. They got a little lost here and I brought them to another tab to report the graffiti there. And then you type in the address, you can confirm and drag, drag and drop your location from the website. On the mobile app side of it, it is an app that geolocates itself, so similar to a mapping system like Apple Maps. It knows where you're located. So that is one benefit of the mobile app versus the website. But this is three different examples of our clients. At the bottom, you'll always have this orange plus button to report a concern. On the right, you have a list of historical issues. You can see them in a map view as well. And to the left would be notices, so history of any notices you've sent out or open notices currently. Just above here, these different categories are what we call mobile buttons. And these are customizable with a URL. You don't, you have to be a programmer to be able to swap these out. It's kind of like a copy and paste of a URL. And you can customize these seasonally. So in the past year or so, a lot of the top categories here has been COVID resources. So you can put this, so it can maybe go to a website that shows the latest updates or for Massachusetts or for the county or for the town protocol. Can have other seasonal things like Pinellas County has a red tide. It just brings them to info on that flooding events. So you can really use this to make it a hub for any of your citizens getting to the, to the app and need to redirect themselves to other resources. So this is a breakdown of what that reporting on a phone looks like. On the left here, you see the different categories, which again are all customizable. We can help you by picking out like the top, the top 10 most popular. Generally, 10 to 15 categories is where we find a sweet spot where people aren't getting too lost or, you know, they can find what they need there. The center here is an example of a duplicate issue. So if you were to type in an issue type and you're near an address that's already been reported, it can pop up and say, hey, is this the issue that you were trying to report? And you can choose to follow the issue versus reporting a second time. And any notifications that go out to the original reporter, you would also receive. And you'll also receive a notice when, when the issue is resolved. For each one of these categories, you can build it out and customize it. So you have primary questions that need to get answered and also secondary questions as well. So you can, this example, it's an abandoned vehicle. You have to answer, you know, if it's in, where is the vehicle? Is it abandoned? Is it inoperable? So this will enable you to make, make a decision based off of how urgent is it to get out to that issue? You know, what resources you might need to go take care of that vehicle. This also comes in handy on the call taker interface with the custom questions that you set for each category. If you have somebody in the town hall office that's fielding phone calls office, often, excuse me, they can pull up, when they get a phone call in, they can pull up See Click Fix app on their desktop, type in the address that the reporter is giving you, put in the type of request, and then answer any of those questions that you've attached to each category in an effort to make sure you're capturing all the info that you need. That call ticker doesn't need to be the expert on that issue necessarily. And it'll hopefully save a call back to that constituent to possibly ask more questions. And you can attach that caller's email to it so that they can get notified when the issue has been acknowledged, resolved, or maybe there, maybe there was an additional question they had to ask. We also embed into Facebook. So I think that Facebook is maybe still in the works or down the road, but when that time does come, we can embed into the Facebook, what we find this doing is opposed to somebody commenting on your Facebook page, maybe getting a little out of line and ranting on Facebook, you can get everything into the app, follow the guidelines of the app, and as well to have all your requests and concerns all in one spot. So on the backend of the town, we give you some tools for the workflow side of it. So this is a list of all the open requests that you'd be able to see internally, things that may still need attention, things that are closed, things are acknowledged. You can sort this by dates. You can take a look at, once you've set up a service level agreement for each type of category, you can sort these by the service level agreement percentage to see, you know, how often you're hitting these, which ones are way out of line, where are missing target altogether. The, right here, these are some of the tools for people out in the field that maybe they got, this is what it would look like if you had a public works public works, worker out in the field and they got a notice for graffiti. So this, it would pop up on their phone and say, hey, there's this graffiti, it's been acknowledged. You can change the status if it's been fixed or if maybe you need to get some more resources for it. And you can see our secondary question here, you know, is it offensive? So give you a little more insight to how quickly you should be able to get to that. We have added in the last few years, ability for member roles, permissions and controls. So for your internal users, you can grant certain people, you know, access to everything to close out order, to close out requests, to reassign requests. And then you can have other people with maybe a more limited, they can get assigned an issue, but maybe before they close it out, you have to have their manager approve that it's closed out. Or maybe you don't want that person speaking directly to your constituents. So we made it that so you can really customize it to who you need to have access to what. We've also added automation subscriptions and escalations. So you can have certain types of issues automatically be assigned to certain departments or perhaps even certain people if it happens to be in a certain part of town that they cover. You can subscribe to different issue categories. So maybe if a manager wants to follow everything or you're only concerned with things in your particular area, you can just follow those types of issues that come in. You can also set up escalations. So if an issue maybe has missed a service level agreement by a week, it can escalate to their manager. Maybe in two weeks it's still missed, it might escalate to that person's manager. So in an effort to make sure that nothing's lost, nothing's missed, you still have visibility to it. So, and as well as the notification that they would get within the See Click Fix app, anybody that has something assigned to them, it'll also go to their email address as well. So two points, you know, if they're not on their phone and not in the See Click Fix app, they, they'll get notified by email as well that they have an issue assigned to them to resolve. When an issue is acknowledged, you can add in. So when an issue is reported, you can give acknowledgement in two ways. You can have a canned response or you can make a custom response. So in this case, this is a canned response that, a generic response that we have built out for a tree, a tree limb down. It gives them a idea of, those issues generally take three to four months. You know, and if it still continues, you can call this phone number. So you can have these per category, different types of acknowledgements sent out. And you can always edit them if maybe a service level has changed and you need to adjust that. So you can see over here, you have your service level expires, what the due date is prioritized. So if something has gotten a lot of follows or maybe it's been reported more than once, you can change the priority. And this is just a little more insight to what this issue looks like. On the right here, we have some internal commenting. So if somebody is out in the field, they're not sure what to be doing with the issue and they want to write their manager a private comment, they can do so without it being visible to everybody in the app. And you can also just enable it to be public as well. So that would be just for internal issues that you might have questions back and forth, what the best plan of action to be. When a request is closed, it's going to, you can make a custom message. In this case, this tree's been removed. Stump is scheduled for a later date and your power will be shut back, turned back on shortly. It even gives you an option for the town resident, once they get notice of it, to, to give thanks. It probably will rarely happen, but it is available. So essentially from start to finish, the, the citizen will be in loop with what's going on with their issue. On the town's end of it, you'll have visibility to see what the status of those issues are. So really giving you the credit for the things you're doing. Am I doing okay on time? Just want to check in on that.
Yep, we've got a little more time left.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So in the See Click Fix offering, there is also a discovery map. So this has been pretty popular. This will give you access to what's currently open, what parts of town need more attention, can help you to make some decisions in terms of, let's say you have a road that may have several potholes and maybe the next time you go pave that, that road should have a top priority. In other areas, you might have a lot of graffiti. It might be an area where maybe more police attention or presence is necessary. So it can help you make, make some decisions based off of that. And we also offer with our, within that workflow, sorry, work order piece of it, a little more down to asset management. So to each type of issue that you get, you can assign different tools and resources that you're using for it, such as stop signs, scent bags, you know, mileage on a truck, so you can log it to each issue. These you can put from, from your phone and the person it's assigned to. You can change the, right from the phone if it's still open or if you've closed it. Or if you're out in the field and you realize you're using more resources than had originally been planned, you can update that on the go without, you know, having to go back to the office and logging in a spreadsheet or something like that. And from their app, they'll be able to see this whole list. So if it's all due today, you know, you can plan out your day and say, okay, I'm going to go hit up these three, these are all the same addresses. You can check through these and you can plan out the next day. It'll show you the ones that are due on that day. You can push them out or change the due date if it's going to take longer. Again, still send a notification to anybody that needs to know that it's been pushed out. All of this info that we're looking at here can be uploaded and ran off of a report. So you can make these reports based off of what the issues are, where the issues happened or where they're located, what the due dates are when they were closed. And you can upload these all to CSV or Excel so they can be shareable. And you can share those internally or schedule them to, to go out. So if you have a meeting, you know, once a month or once a week with set departments, you can share those. So this is a look at our report card. So the report card will give you the history of all your reporting concerns. It lets you know, you know, how long those issues are out there, how long ago they were created, how many have been closed, how many days to acknowledgement. How many days to acknowledgement? Service levels and and how how? How often you're hitting the percentage of service level, so if this was a live version, you can pull on these blue hyperlinks. And see a whole history of it. So you can kind of see, you know, how each department's doing. How individuals are doing, well, what issues may need some work. And again, this is all shareable as well, and you can. Schedule this to go out. Weekly, monthly, daily, whatever you need it to be, and you can customize it to include. Information that might be particular to those people you're sharing it with. Notices is the other piece we looked at on the phone app. So this is the ability, in this case, is the parking ban. You can schedule these to go out, or you can send them out immediately, so if you know you have an event coming up, in this case. There's a snowstorm coming, you can shoot them towards the resources, maybe where the best place to park is. And this will go out, you can customize the body here, you can also save templates, so if it's something that happens often, you can. Have them all built in here. What this looks like on the citizen side. Is when you're to send a notice out, any of the C Click Fix users. Would get a notice on their phone that pops up, says there's a parking ban, you can click on it, go in to see more detail. And then on the right here is where this will live in the app, you can see the history of any any notices there. So that takes me to the end of presentation I prepared for you tonight. A little background to see click pics, we're generally about sixty to ninety days to be implemented. We do include. Dedicated implement implementation team. Ongoing technical support. A client success manager that's dedicated to the account. And we also offer. Comprehensive training for native systems and integrations. So I that is everything I have prepared in the presentation for you tonight. Any questions come up, I'm sure there's probably some.
Rosemary. Yep, you're muted.
Might be muted.
Ask Bill, I'm passing right this minute.
Okay. Bill?
So, you know, I've had the advantage of seeing this presentation a couple of times now and. It's spoken to John, so the the elephant in the room, John, always is how much? You know, what are you looking at for a cost?
Yep, so the the pricing can vary based off of, we do our pricing in. Really three pieces to it, first being how many, it's a user license model. So how many users you need internally using it? And then integrations, so some of those. Other, if there's any other systems that you need the the system to communicate with. Can add additional costs. And then the third piece is. There's there's a customized branded app that is more for marketing purposes. That it's basically if you were to go to the mobile. App Store. It would be downloading an Ashburnham app versus downloading C Click Fix. Say the majority of our clients are on the C Click Fix app itself. And when you're within Ashburnham, it'll bring up your set of. Set of request categories. So with all that being said. I would probably base off of the size of Bashburnham that somewhere between ten to fifteen thousand annually. And probably if you know, if it was just standard offering, you know, without any integrations, probably closer to that ten. Ten thousand annually.
And Joe, where are you guys based out of?
Our office is in New Haven, Connecticut. And we are part of Civic Plus now, and their main office is in Kansas.
And for those that don't know, Civic Plus is the company that manages our website for the town of Ashburnham, I believe.
So that's a question I have, so do we get a discount because we're already a Civics Plus customer?
We are more than willing to work with you based off of being an existing client.
So this is a question for Brian because Marlboro has C Click Fix. Did you know that, Brian?
I heard, I didn't deal with it much there, but I knew they had a system there.
Yeah, I didn't know whether you knew anything about it, Pittsburgh has it also. A lot of communities have it in Massachusetts. I I just did a Google search, C Click Fix Massachusetts and a ton of ones. I I've never seen it before, but I mean, it looks really neat. Yeah. So it looks good, what what would Randy say, Randy's here? Is this something that you would see could benefit? DPW, I mean, you'd know about these things and you wouldn't have a whole bunch of people calling and stuff. They're just alert you on on your phone. You wouldn't have the emails to go through.
So a work order program, you know, such as C Click Fix is very important to, you know, any community, large and small. To track your workload for do follow up in, you know, for most importantly, for customer service, which is our residents. So with C Click Fix, I do see some, you know, great attributes with the program. However, there are other work order programs out there that work. As well. And some a little more accustomed to working with smaller communities such as Ashburnham, so. C Click Fix, I mean, Pittsburgh is a population of forty thousand. Lemser uses it, they're also forty thousand. They also have, which because they're a city. They have full time dispatchers that. Handle the redirection of all the data that comes in. To the department, so. You you gotta kind of have the. The personnel, if you will, to to handle a system to make it work great and. You see, I I don't see it for for our community, I know I know it works well in other communities.
Would it would it help you to put put you in touch with some communities of like size to get a better idea of? You know, how they're using it?
So. As of today, you know, the communities around us, West Minister, Winchton. Towns that are our size are currently not using any. Work order system. At all, they they're dependent upon their website. To field most of their calls, we are using a work order program to date. We've had it in play for a year now. We have opened and closed over eleven hundred work orders. So we're pretty comfortable with what we're using at this time.
Randy, does that work order system allow the? Ease of use for the residents? Are they able to take a photograph and email it to you and then immediately orders a work order and gets in the queue or? How does that happen? Is it still that they're writing an email, you're getting it off the website, you have Julie or whomever? On generate the work order, I'm just trying to understand the flow.
So it is very similar, so this workforce system that we're currently using will. Allow for public input or to to make notification of. Trees down, potholes. I think the biggest difference is that. The the flow, the information flow is more controllable by those that are using the program, that is the DPW. Opposed to making it a a Facebook type. Social media type app that, you know, you know, anybody could just keep, you know, repeating on the same issue. You know, and one of the other challenges here in town, I think, you know, comes to mind is we have so many. Private roads. And people don't know, and Bill, you'd made this point earlier when we were talking about our complete streets and. Our road program, people don't know that this this is not a town road. Whereas it's for C Click Fix in a city, it's all the city, so you really can't get that wrong. But you know, I just think it's it's a little more challenging for a small town of Ashburnham.
I understand what you're saying. No, I I was just saying that you don't have to do the Facebook option, so that's my understanding, right, John? So you can have an app on your phone. And a person would go to their phone, open up the app and do the reporting. So you don't have to use Facebook, that's an option, right?
Yeah, it's an option, and it brings you, you're not reporting it through Facebook, you're reporting it through C Click Fix. One of the things that brings it to is our user license and which we're able to moderate. And, you know, people can get banned or, you know, stopped from using it for abusing it. And one thing I was just going to mention about, you know, private streets versus. Streets you're responsible for is when we implement C Click Fix. We will work with you to fence out. If you're using ArcGIS or anything like that, you know, what? What is your responsibility and what's not? So if somebody was to report an issue that's on a private road. It wouldn't let them, it would, you know, it would come up with an X and say, you know, this isn't Ashburnham. You know, you're you're not going to be able to report it there, get it, get it resolved.
So Randy, I just had a quick question on the the software that you currently have, which I didn't know you had. So this isn't something the public uses at all, then, this is an internal system.
Not at this time, however, we've just been using the, you know, about a year now. But we are not using the program to its full capacity. However, we are trending towards doing just that and making the. An app or the ability for the towns folks to reach out to the DPW. With their issues outside of, you know, even using the town website. So that all will be streamlined into our work order system that we have now. Now, you asked earlier, you know, can they take a picture, I'm assuming that they can. Take a picture and send it, send it in, and again, I'm not, I I'm I'm not here to, you know, sell what we're using, I'm just. Making you aware that we are a little town of Ashburnham, a little ahead of the curve, if you will. For work order systems, we've we've already implemented something. Whereas there are a lot of the smaller towns have not, so we're trying to be. You know, smart about, you know, what we're doing and when we're doing it. And using all the resources that we have to our fullest capacity.
Yeah, I I understand, Randy, I just want to make sure, you know, hey, we we have this presentation because we need to weigh in as the board of selectmen. But I want to make sure that we're looking at apples and apples, I don't even know what you're talking about, I've never seen a presentation of the software that you have, I don't know the name of it. I don't know whether or not it really is apples to apples, what's the name of it, Randy?
It's called People's GIS. It's it's utilized by a lot of communities and cities and towns. You know, some of the larger cities that have the funds to to get any work order system they want. Have given up what they had and gone with People's GIS. So I'm even looking at People's GIS to integrate our snow removal program into it. For automatic billing and keeping track of our assets, so there's a lot of great. Fingers, if you will, to the program that already exists.
John, in in your program. If somebody makes a report. Say, street light out. I'm assuming that would be like an email and and probably go, we have our own power company, so it would go there. So how does it work after hours if there's a wire down? Street light out, yeah, you can wait two days and fix that. If there's a wire down, we want somebody on the way now.
Yeah. So yeah, we wouldn't want, would generally see click pics would be. Not emergency or quality of life issues, so if it was something that required. Like in that case, you know, you'd probably have a category that is. You know, well, you probably wouldn't want to put down wire as an option in there as a category. Or if it went to down wire, it'd be a phone number to call.
It would be the same too, like you might have a tree blocking the road. It's predicted to have high winds tonight, so we we could end up with a a large branch creating a traffic hazard, which. Would need to be taken care of then as opposed to the morning.
Yeah, probably wouldn't want, yeah, one that's blocking the traffic or, you know, that'd probably go through emergency. Services, right, so probably would call the. My my first thought would be to call nine one one, say, there's a tree, a tree in the road, you know, that could cause a big issue. But yeah, I would just keep those categories out of it. But yeah, things that need immediate attention, we wouldn't want to have coming through the app.
Okay.
I have another question, John, do you know about People GIS, is this an Apple to Apple application or is it different? Because GIS to me is mapping.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with it. It does, there are a lot of companies out there that do the work order piece in particular. I'm not familiar with them.
Yeah. I mean, I'd love to see a presentation on this People GIS, Randy.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, now that we've already have it, maybe they're not willing to come out, but.
So it it in addition to People's GIS, one of the neat things that they were able to do for us is. They brought our tie card system into the program, which is indicates where all our water shut offs. Are so for our water sewer department uses that. I mean, in the field, they they have a tablet, they pull it up, and they know right where the shut off is, and they go to work, they don't have to. Come back to the office and look for through the little paper tie card files that we had, the little three by fives and. So that is another great add on for the app, so there's, like I said, we're, we are not. Using it to its fullest capacity at this time, however, I'm looking forward to doing just so.
Bill, do you have anything to add where you'd already spoken with John?
No, I'm actually good, I think. My my questions have been answered.
Okay. Then I think we're done at this point. John, thank you for being here.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it, and have a wonderful night.
Thanks, we'll be in touch.
Thanks.
All right.
So, hey, Leo?
Yes.
If I could just follow up, so. I actually found out on Friday of last week that about People GIS. Steve had shot me an email and actually spent some time on the phone with Randy. And with Steve talking about this, and as I shared with them, so I'm not talking out of school. My frustration is that I didn't know we had this. And again, I think it would have been nice to know that, it sounds like we have some opportunities to. To do better with that system, and so one of the things I actually called the owner of the company. And Steve had given me his name, so I spoke with him. And Rosemary had mentioned that I think we should, in fact, schedule a meeting. And like this with People GIS and have them come on. And have them walk us through what they can do and what they can't do. I I don't have any dog in the fight here, I don't really care who it is. I just know that we need to do better than what we're doing right now, so if it's our existing vendor, that's great. If it's somebody new, that's okay too, but. So if you want me to, I can reach out to. Guy's name is Kevin Flanders, or Randy can do it, however you'd like to do it, but I'd just like to throw that out there as I think the next step for us.
It's probably a good thing because, to be very honest, I'm rather upset. We voted, the planning board is going to apply for a grant. To try to get our water and sewer system mapped out along with our waste, not wastewater, but stormwater system mapped out. Now Randy's telling us that this program tells them where all the water shut offs are. So I got a feeling this program might do what we're applying for a grant to do, which is going to make us look pretty damn stupid. I'm. I guess I'm kind of directing some of this to you, Randy, that I miffed that we didn't know that we had this. So you personally, but I'm just, I'm frustrated.
So to answer your question, Leo, the the DLTA grant that you're referring to. Yeah, I actually, I am actually in a conference call tomorrow with the MRPC. With that, so this this is about, this is about electronic mapping for the utilities, which we. Do not have at this time. Would I like to see that within People's GIS? Absolutely. Will it hurt to get electronic mapping for later integration? No, it will not. So the key here is to get the mapping done, so we have electronically. So we have that in house, right now I've got a room full of, you know. Prints for this and prints for that, when you have to go look something up, it's it's a daunting task at best.
I'm sure you've probably got stuff that you gotta call Bob Young because he's. And that's how things used to work.
Yes, yes.
So will the program that you. So will the program that you have, if, if we were to get that mapping grant, would that integrate with your program?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So we're not wasting, we're not wasting anything here. And I, when, when Roger brought this to my attention, I'm like, boy, I can, I gotta jump on the bandwagon for that because there's such a great need for, for the DPW, you know?
Exactly.
Leo, we do have a question, um, from a resident asking how much we pay for the People GIS per year, if Randy knows that?
I, I do. So currently now the yearly cost is $5,000. But, um, much as C Click Fix, uh, see, as he said, you know, when you, when you start to use more, uh, there may be additional costs that follow. I, I don't know what that looks like. Um, but the initial setup costs had already been paid out, um, prior to even the last fiscal year. So we've, we've been just at $5,000 with what we're doing. And like I say, I'm really happy with it. It's, it's been a really good thing for us.
So you're saying it probably also has modules to, to add on to what it can do?
It, it has a lot of modules to add on. It's, it's a very expanding program.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I have to agree with Randy. Well, I'm on their website and I'm looking at it. The only thing that I have concerns about is how much, um, interaction or the ease of interaction is for the resident, if we want to go down that path, okay? Um, you know, I'm just saying that looks to be the biggestest difference. It looks like it provides a tremendous number of options internally for public works. But that, that, you know, as Randy said, you know, it's about customer service, right? That's the piece where I don't know whether or not it really is as good as C Click Fix. And I have found some under, smaller communities that have this, uh, I found one community in Massachusetts has 4,000 people and they're using it. So, hey, and I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying that, you know, hey, for me, I look at things from, you know, are we looking at apples and apples? Because I can't compare something, whether it costs 5,000 here or 10,000 here, if we're not looking at the same thing. Okay? So.
I, I think the presentation from, uh, People's GIS would be great.
Yes, that's why I asked, yeah.
They'll be able to explain the, the, uh, the, you know, the town side part of that as far as getting, getting back to us. So, which is important, so.
Well, here's the thing, and you're probably not aware of it, but I have asked for monthly reports on what your department does. Cause I get a lot of people complaining about you.
I can produce that.
In order to defend you, I gotta know, you know, okay, they spent a, a week on these three streets doing potholes. They spent another week on this street cutting brush. You know, I know you guys are out there doing it.
Yep.
But it needs to be documented. So when people do have a complaint and then if they want to take a ride and see that those potholes have been dealt with?
Yeah.
Fine. But yeah. I mean.
And I have the ability to print out everything, you know? Have we captured every single thing we've done? No, I, I would not be, uh, forthcoming to say because we're still, we're getting better at it. But as I said, right now, we have 1,100 completed work orders and that's between water sewer and the DPW. So it's, 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 we use those records to constantly go back on when we have reoccurring issues at some addresses. And we have that electronically saved. It's, it's a, it's a wonderful thing.
And it's an impressive number. So when people complain, because they're going to complain to us, if we can say, yeah, these guys, they're out there.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely.
So if, who, Bill, do you wanna, or shall we have Randy get a hold?
You tell me whatever you'd like to do.
Uh, I, I can reach out and, uh, get it set up for, uh, Board of Selectment meeting, have them make a presentation.
It might be too soon, but if it could be in our meeting in two weeks, that would be good to run it back to back to what we just had tonight.
Sure.
And, you know, somebody mentioned, well, maybe they might not want to come out because we're already dealing with them. Well, there's a renewal thing, right?
No, that, that, that will, I'm sure that won't be the case. They're a great company, so.
Yeah, when I talked to, uh, talked to Kevin.
Okay.
I had, I had put that out there to him and he was more than happy to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. So now I guess we'll be moving on to the discussion of the Town Administrator's Review. We've all gotten the copy that Ryan filled out.
Yes.
I'm still working on mine, but I have a couple of questions for you guys. There's different ways of doing these reviews. In the past, when, when I was on the board in the past with a different town administrator, we would average out the three selectments reviews and the chairman would sit down with the administrator and go over it. Some towns do it at a public meeting. Uh, Rosemarie, how did you guys do it when I wasn't on the board?
Uh, I believe you're required to have it at a public meeting. That's what I was told.
So.
So how, how we did it, the only time I've ever done it is that the, we had a working, like a working session. Uh, it was advertised as the, uh, Town Administrator's Review for no other reason that we knew it was going to take time. All three of us actually read through our reviews individually.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, and with, obviously with the town administrator there and there was a conversation. Members of the public were there. Um, and then that was really it. And then all three evaluations were, um, posted, no, two of the three were posted online, uh, for the public to see. Um, uh, we did not compile them into one document.
I kind of like it the way you just explained. And I do like it where all three of us can be sitting there because the way it used to be, it would just be the chairman meeting with the TA. But the TA might have questions. And the person that had a good or a not so good comment is there to defend their comments. I, I kind of like it that way. So moving forward, what, well, Bill, let me get here from you first.
Well, I've, um, while this is my first tour on the Board of Selectmen, um, I was actually at that meeting when the previous town administrator was evaluated for another issue, but I was there. And, uh, back when I was the chairman of the school committee, we had to do the superintendent's evaluation. So, uh, I, I share, I think both your opinions that I think it's, uh, best to do it in person. Um, I would not like to do it on a regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting because I think it's going to be too involved. It'll, it'll take way too much time. So, uh, and I, and I, I think that if as individual members were evaluating, uh, the town administrator, then we need to be able to defend our evaluations. And there's no better way to do that than sitting across the table from somebody. So that would be my preference and just to throw it out there. Um, you know, we did the, the budget meeting last week. I think we need to have another working session with the budget. We could probably combine those two things because both of them will take time. Uh, but we could do those probably in the not too distant future, like on a Thursday or something like that.
Okay. Rosemarie?
Well, hey, I, I thought the last one was effective. I'll tell you that the other option that we had was, um, that was presented to us when we were doing the, uh, last evaluation. Um, was that you would take the three individual board members evaluations and actually combine them into one, like you had suggested, where it was, you know, all together in one spot. Um, and you know, typically that's something that's done if it's like at a, you know, like a regularly scheduled board meeting, you only present it as one. Um, the, the conversation that we had at the time was, uh, we, we had not done the evaluation until just before, um, one of the board members was leaving. So we were really backed into time. It was a time constraint thing. Um, and we didn't get those evaluations done in, or in a timely enough manner to be able to compile them into one. So, you know, it worked out just fine and there's no problem with, with the way we did that. Uh, but I just wanted to let you know, there is another option. The one thing that I was very, um, I had a strong opinion on is I did not think that the person who should compile, um, all the board members evaluations into one, if we were to choose that, would be someone who reports directly to Brian.
No, it would be better that it would be one of us.
Correct.
So why don't we do them individually? And today's the first, so this Thursday's the fourth. Two weeks from this Thursday is the 18th. How does that sound for a working meeting?
Um, it, it's fine with me. We were going to originally do it on the 15th, so it's the same week. I'm fine with that. I could do it the 11th. Oh, is that, yeah, 11th is the Thursday. Whatever you want to do. I mean, I'm free both days.
What about you, Bill?
I, I prefer the 11th only because if we're going to do the budget, then I, I think we just, we need to work our way through that sooner as opposed to later.
Okay.
Do it at the same time. So I, I, I can do the 18th. I would prefer the 11th.
Okay. So that would be a week from this Thursday. And 11 AM?
Well, is Brian available?
Yeah, my only thing, if we're talking the budget, uh, the Motor Vehicle Excise revenue should be in on the 15th. So I'd like to get an idea what that is, but I know we're gonna, we're gonna hit the revenues again down the road. So the 11th or 18th, I'm good on both.
We'll do the 11th. Um, we'll start with the, with the review. And if it takes too much time, we can set a further date for more in-depth with the budget if, if we need that. Uh, so 11 AM on the 11th? 11, 11 on 11?
Yep, that's, that's good with me. I just had a question though, that this is, the, the budget discussion though is only with the board or are we having a meeting? Is this when we're starting to go into meetings with advisory? I don't, I don't know. Have you, you planned those yet, Brian?
No, I think we still need to kind of make sure we're all good before we go there. Especially with the revenues. I, I'm, until I have revenue numbers, at least the excise.
And generally the advisory does theirs independent of us, unless there's an issue where a time constraint.
Right. The one thing that we've been doing the last couple of years though, is that, um, a member of the board has a, has attended those meetings, but they don't contribute to those meetings.
Okay.
And who's the liaison?
I am.
Oh, so maybe you're the one who goes.
I'm already going. So I've already talked to Ron and told him that, uh, like I said last time, it's tough for me to sit quietly, but I'll do my best.
So, so we're gonna meet on the 11th at 11:00. So that brings us right into the next agenda item, which is an FY22 budget update.
Can I just ask if that's going to be at the public safety meeting, building like before?
I think that worked pretty well.
Okay.
And it, it gave us enough space for the distancing that's required.
Okay.
If any public shows up, it will give even more space.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking. So Brian, do you have anything to update us with from our discussion last week?
Uh, no, I think we're, you know, we, we've had our meeting, you know, last week. And I did mention to Bill regarding the bylaws for capital and we can talk about that more at our meeting on the 11th. Um, but I, you know, I think we're still, you know, pretty good with where we ended last week. Obviously there's some more discussion and, you know, my thing is still the revenue numbers are concerning.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
So, um, Brian, I know we talked about this briefly before, but one of the things I would really like to see is a budget timeline. You know, taking what's supposed to be the annual town meeting and, you know, backing into, you know, get that set. When's the, you know, when are we gonna, uh, when, when are we gonna open the warrant? When are we gonna meet with the advisory board? Just, just try to lay out a, a map of what this is going to look like because, historically, we always seem to get caught that we're rushing to get certain things done. And, uh, I think if we all have a schedule and we know what the expectation is on everything, I think it would make more sense. I certainly don't need it tonight, but if you could think along those lines, I'd appreciate that.
No, most definitely, Bill. I, great, uh, thing. I still have your thing from FY11, the, the calendar thing you gave me right here on top. So, um, I'm, I'm all for timelines. I'll get that done for you.
Thank you.
Didn't they used to be a generic one put out by the state as like a guideline?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the Association of Town Finance Committee puts one out, but he's got one that, I don't know if it was Doug's or somebody else's that kind of, it actually laid it out for the whole year. You know, when you would expect revenues and taxes and this and that. So, um, I came across it and gave it to Brian. So.
Okay.
Some, something, doesn't have to be the whole year, just something that has a timeline for this particular time of the year.
And there is a little bit in the chatter on the budget timeline. Okay.
Yes, yeah.
All right.
I, I, I was given one by DOR. Um, and I.
That might be the generic one that I'm thinking of.
Yeah, it is.
But I mean, then anything can be tweaked to meet the town's needs. All right. So next we're on to an appointment to the Cultural Council. Uh, have both of you had the opportunity to read the resume and, and that information?
I have.
Bill, did you?
Uh, I haven't seen it, but I, I, I don't need to see it. I know the person involved.
Have to apologize. I thought I sent it to both you and Rosemarie. But I will recheck to see if I did. But you know.
Send it to me. Yeah, no, I got it.
And.
All right.
It's Eva Sibley and she comes recommended by the Cultural Council. So if you know her, Bill, Rosemarie, you've seen her, her resume as, as I have. Uh, I don't really see any need for discussion. If I'm wrong, please say.
No, I'll, I'll, um, I'll give you a motion to appoint Eva Sibley to the Ashburnham Cultural Council.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Leo Jansen, yes.
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
It was unanimous. Excellent.
If I could just get you to sign that, Bill, when you get a chance, the select, the appointment slip.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. The next one is to approve the over expenditure of the snow and ice account. Uh, it's the one account that we legally can overspend. And it always happens because you can't judge the weather. Brian, do you want to weigh in on this before we take a vote?
Sure. So we're just, um, looking for an authorization from the Board of Selectmen to allow that account to be overdrawn. Um, once that's done, you know, we can continue the process. And then once the end of the season comes, you know, we'll do a transfer from snow and ice, um, to cover that deficit so that we will run it over into the next fiscal year with, if you do, you have to raise it on the recap, means it affects the tax rate or gets put into that budget. And we don't want anything pushed forward if we can help it. And I have allocated some money in free cash reserve to take care of that.
Are we like right at the end of what's appropriated right now?
We are close.
Okay. Rosemarie, any questions?
No.
Bill?
No, I'm good. Uh, I will give you a motion to authorize the town administrator to, um, over expend the snow and ice account.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Leo Jansen, yes.
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
Okay. Now we're on to approval of the minutes for February 16th, 2021.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the minutes, um, of Tuesday, February 16th as written.
Um, I'll second that, but, um, did we want to approve the February 25th ones as well? They were both in our agenda packet.
Hmm, it's not on this agenda.
No, but they were in the.
I just actually did them today, sorry.
They're in the packet.
I got it in there, but I didn't have it on the agenda.
That stupid thing that I have trouble finding. How about if we put that one off till next?
Okay, yep.
Okay. So is the yep a second?
Uh, yeah, I already, it's already seconded. I just wanted to know if we wanted to add February 25th.
Okay. All in favor? Leo Jansen, yes.
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes. Hey, Leo?
Yes.
Um, even though it's not on the agenda, I think we can still do the 20. even though it's not on the agenda, I think we can still do the twenty-fifth. The, the, it, there's, here, here's what it says, a budget draft review. Um, Brian presented to the board his draft fiscal twenty-two budget. Stated all budgets are in from the department heads, however, still waiting on final numbers from the state. The board will meet again to finalize the budget, uh, looking to schedule a meeting with advisory and capital. And, um, the only other, the other business was talking about grant programs. There's like nothing here.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rose Marie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
All right.
No sense of carrying that over if we don't have to.
So that one was the twenty-fifth, correct?
That was a working session, yes.
Okay. Very good. Now we are on to other business. Does anybody have any other business for us to cover this evening?
I have, I have one item.
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Okay.
So we had received on Thursday, the eighteenth of February, an email from Roger Hoy uh, talking, uh, was, wasn't just sent to us, it was other committees and departments, talking about, um, a site plan review up on one nineteen and, um, planning board request the respective boards, committees and departments reply within fourteen days um, about this application, then the, it, that cutoff is Monday, March eighth. So if we're going to comment about it, it has to do with the submitted for the Butler Motel, the three-unit structure with an office on Ashby Road at the intersection of one nineteen. So I just want to bring it to the board, and are we going to comment on this? Or are we going to um, let the time pass without us weighing in?
Do either of you have any comments that you'd like to add?
Um, well, I, just a quick question. Are we going to um, respond individually or as a board? Um,
I would-
We're gonna have to discuss it if it's a board, right?
I would say it's best if we're, if we're gonna have a response, it should come from the board.
I agree.
I agree as well. So, um, yeah, I, I mean, hey, I don't know. Uh, this is just, you know, me looking at the letter that Sarah wrote. And, uh, Sarah Culgen, our, our building commissioner, the one thing that really just jumps out to me is her last paragraph in the letter, where she says, this does not look like a motel. It looks like a three-dwelling apartment building. Um, and residential is not allowed in a business zone, so you know, I mean, uh, that's concerning to me.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know where we go to find the definition to back up what she has said.
Well, you know, I mean, uh, really, I mean, uh, how do you have a motel when you only got three units in it? How do you make money from that? You know, I mean, that's the deal, right?
Yep.
Um, and it's, he says it's an extended stay. A motel by definition is a short-term, like overnight thing. You drive up, you stay overnight, you leave. Um, I, I just have a problem with the whole deal. But I don't know, you know, I'm not an expert. I'm not a zoning person or a planning person. I don't know what can and can't. I don't know whether or not we've consulted with town council, but you know, here we are, our building commissioner is saying, hey, wait a minute, this looks like an apartment building.
And he says extended stay. To me, that sounds like more than a week.
So I, 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 I don't know. I mean, this is the same uh, developer who tried to do something similar before, and then he withdrew it. Um, you, you know, it seems like we're, we're full circle back to the beginning, right?
You know, I, I, I don't know who this person is. Um, my life depended on, you know, I couldn't tell you who it is, but, and, and I don't know if the, the situation I'm gonna talk about was, is the same person or not. It's really irrelevant to me. But a similar situation to this happened in Townsend a number of years ago, where, um, similar proposal, it was a bigger situation. It was gonna be a motel. And at the end of the day, they called it a motel. It was apartments. And I know it caused a huge uproar in Townsend. And I think, once they traveled that road, they couldn't go back on it. It was there. There was nothing they could do about it. It's still in existence today. It's apartments. And, um, with my limited knowledge of this whole thing, these are apartments. You can call them whatever you'd like. But these are going to be apartments at the end of the day. And that is certainly not allowed in the zoning. And what we're trying to do up in that green business area up there, this clearly in my mind is not conducive to that. So I, I am absolutely opposed to, um, allowing this to go forward. I don't know what authority we have, if any, but, um, I would certainly be on the record as opposed to this project.
I agree, and when, when it got brought up in the past, I spoke to somebody I knew from Townsend, because I worked in Lunenburg when that happened. Unfortunately, the person that I spoke to didn't remember the particulars. And I know that particular building today no longer says motel. It, it just says apartments. It was a different builder, a- as far as I remember. But I'm in agreement. I, I just think, uh, I just think this is a way of trying to circumvent the zoning. And a three-unit motel just doesn't, if, if I was out riding around needing to stop at a motel, and I come to something like a three-unit, uh, I won't say publicly, but the first thought that comes to my mind would be some sarcastic name. It, it just wouldn't be appealing. And, and I have to agree. I don't know what our legal grounds are, but I am not in favor of it.
Yeah, the, the, you mean, being in the, the food business for a while, extended stay hotels are a thing. They're quite popular for, you know, people that are taking jobs and, you know, don't want to relocate the whole family, you know, but they're they're relatively good-sized places that are, are built specifically for that with, you know, restaurants and um, fitness areas and pools and things like that. It's just, it's a hotel that you're staying, you know, could be weeks or months at a time. So, again, it's a thing. But that's not what this is.
Exactly. I can't picture a three-unit having a pool or a fitness room or even the place in the morning to get the coffee and the muffins that a lot of motels do. Rose Marie?
Well, I mean, hey, I said it from the beginning. I don't think you, if, if, if you were writing a business plan, opening up a motel, it wouldn't just have three units in it. Um, so it's a resident, in my opinion, it's a residential building being put in the business district. Um, you know, you can't do that.
Exactly.
And, and even if it was allowed, we don't have, you, you, hey, correct me, you're, you are in zoning. You can't do a duplex or a triplex in Ashburnham without going and getting a variance from, uh, ZBA. So either way, it doesn't work, right?
And in the past, they haven't been approved. I, I actually had a relative that in the eighties wanted to put up a couple duplexes and, uh, my relatives ran a class act. But one of the things when it got shot down was, we realize you run a class act, but what happens if you build it and sell it in a year? Would the new person run a class act? And based on that, they didn't get their variance. So, you know, I, I just, I don't foresee this working out as a motel as we know it.
Yeah, the other comment I had, and hey, I, I, I don't know who's buying the houses that he's building and the other adjoining lots, which are residential, that he's putting in the green business district. Um, I, I mean, my recollection is, is those homes are well over four hundred thousand dollars, and now you're gonna put a three-family next to them on the corner? That's a motel? I, I, I don't know. That's just, I wouldn't be happy if I was buying one of those four hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes.
Yeah, I wouldn't be either.
But, you know, you can never be guaranteed when you build a house, what's gonna be next to you necessarily, so.
That's true.
That's just a comment on my part.
So if we are to respond back to, uh, the planning board, do we have to give them, or should we give them a detailed response as to what our issues are? Or would we be better served, uh, just saying that we're not in favor of this particular project?
I think we'd probably be better served saying we're not in favor because we're not zoning or planning, so we don't really have a standing in, in that respect. But as the Board of Selectmen, we do have a standing to, I'm sure there'll be townspeople that aren't very happy to see this. So we have standing to say the people that we represent are not happy.
I, I would also recommend that if we're writing something, we, that we we get an opinion from town council. Just have her to look, look over the, the, uh, the letter. I mean, you know, I just don't know what we, you know, I, you know, we can say we're not in favor of it, but
Right.
You know, we might not have the ability to stop it. I mean, when you look at Sarah's letter, you know, even she's questioning that. So yeah, I, I don't know. I just don't want to put anything, uh, in writing that is not, uh, reviewed by town council. But I'm like hypersensitive about stuff like that, so.
Oh, so am I. I don't want to get, put the town in a-
Exactly.
Liability. So I guess the question will be to, to Brian or Mary, if, if that could be run by town council? And I'm sure she's already aware of it from, from our zoning boards, too. But just, uh, what standing we have and, and what we can, can say. So if, if you guys could jump on that, maybe even tomorrow, so that if planning needs an answer by Monday, we can give them one, but we can put it in the right legal context.
W- w- would it be appropriate for town council to write the letter on our behalf?
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
I can ask them.
Okay.
Or, or if not, you know, because she may be weighing in on other aspects of this, but maybe she could draft a letter.
Yeah.
That would, you know, um, you know, meet her approval and send it off and, you know, we could put it together and Leo could sign it and go from there.
So I'm al- I'm always one that says, why are we paying for legal counsel if we don't want to listen to them? And, you know, we're paying. But as far as I'm concerned, we're gonna listen.
So I'm willing to offer you a motion. I'm not quite sure what the motions would say, though, um, about a motion to, uh, reach out to town council uh, to get her opinion on the proposed Butler Motel on Ashby Road at the intersection of one nineteen with the Board of Selectmen unanimously, unanimously not supporting the project.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rose Marie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
All right. Do we have, uh, Rose Marie, did you have something other, other, under other business?
Yes, yes, I did. Just very quickly, um, I'm having a phone call tomorrow, uh, with the Mass Housing Partnership regarding the Affordable Housing Trust Technical Assistance Grant. Um, so we talked about this at our last meeting. This is due March fifth.
Okay.
Um, so she's going to, we're, we're basically gonna talk about whether or not we would apply for this. So, um, her recommendation, just the, the little big back and forth that, uh, I had with her is that she thinks that since our Affordable Housing Trust has not yet met that what they should, uh, what they could help us with is, um, to making recommendations on their role, guidelines, things like that, all the stuff that, you know, Brian's charged to do. They could do it for us. And, uh, it would basically be up and ready. Um, now, it's, again, very competitive cramp. They're only picking two communities in state, so we might not get it either.
Given our circumstances, can she give a recommendation that yes, we should apply, or no, maybe we should wait?
I, I have no idea. Uh, but I'll find out tomorrow. Um, she's also gonna tell me about other technical assistance, uh, that, um, MHP provides that might become available, uh, down the line for Ashburnham.
Okay. So I don't-
My big quandary is, is if she says apply, um, it's due Friday. So do we want to apply? Do we not want to apply? Do we want to take a pass? Brian, I'm gonna defer to you because you're the guy who's, you know, running Housing Affordable Trust Committee. All we have is a bylaw and four people appointed, or three people appointed. So do you want assistance on recommendations on what they should do?
Sure. I haven't really looked deep into it, but I know there's some state rules that just, um, that may affect us that recently, uh, occurred. I haven't looked really deep into those, but I am concerned about some of the state rules that, um, just allowed it, so.
Well, that was the dense, the big one was the dense housing, which we have covered in that community compact grant. That's the twelve thousand five hundred dollar grant. So I think we've got that covered, but, um, you know, maybe not. But, um, I'll get more in. How about this? I'll get more information from her tomorrow, and then I'll call you. And then we can make a decision. I, the application is not that involved, but-
We should vote to say, yes, we want to go forward. So should we take a vote now? So pending advice to apply?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I'd feel most comfortable if Brian, uh, you know, and I both have a meeting in the mindset it's worth it. If Brian doesn't think it's worth it, you know, it's really more to assist him on getting this off the ground.
And what's this grant called?
It's the Affordable Housing Trust Technical Assistance Grant.
So what if we made a motion to tentatively approve whatever you just said? Say it again, the Massachusetts-
Affordable Housing Trust Technical Assistance Grant.
Um, pending final approval by the town administrator.
I'll second that.
All in favor, Leo Jansen, yes?
Rose Marie Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
So now if, if she encourages you for us to apply, we as a board have just voted to do it. And if she encourages you not to, well, then nothing lost, nothing gained.
Yep, so my, my call with her is at one o'clock, Brian, so I'll call you thereafter.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Leo, one other thing popped up when the, in my mind, when I heard the word grant. So I'd sent an email out to everybody, uh, I think last week, but I did hear back from, uh, Mass DOT. And we were not successful in getting the, uh, winter shared streets grant that we, the second one that we'd applied for. So unfortunately, we were unsuccessful on both of those, but as we've said before, you lose out a hundred percent of the grants you don't apply for. So I'm glad we applied for it, but we were not successful.
I'm glad we applied, too.
Uh, so the only other thing I had was, I don't know if anybody had the opportunity to look at the Community One Stop Expression of Interest uh, information. I sent it out a while ago. Uh, we did, I am gonna bring it forward to Economic Development, but it's due April second. So our next meeting is the fifteenth, Economic Development meets on the sixteenth. It's due the second, so, um, you know, we won't know whether or not this is something we want to wait or um, move forward to with, um, until the next board meeting. Which is it gonna be? Are we gonna meet the twenty-ninth of March, or are we gonna meet the fifth of April?
April fifth. I think, because it's the first and third, right?
Yep.
Doesn't say anything about the fifth.
Now, we may end up meeting again in March, but that's all gonna depend on the budget situation and the information that Brian gets.
Right. Yeah, so, you know, like I said, I, there's a, there is a, um, uh, they believe they're going to open it up again in the fall, so it's not like we've lost our opportunity. The biggest thing is, is that if there are any grants that we had planned to apply for over the summer. And Randy is still here, right, Randy? Randy Williams?
Sorry about that. I'm sorry?
No, do you know if you and Steve were looking at applying for Mass Works Grant?
Not that I'm aware of, Rosemarie.
Okay, so that's the biggest one that, you know, I, you know, had, we'd have to really plan for that. But the the only other one that I thought would be timely, but since by law review is going to last 18 to 20 months, would be the Community Planning Grant 1, which doesn't become available till July 1st anyway. But we have to complete these expressions of interest in order to apply for any of these grants now. We're not eligible unless we fill these forms out. And they're pretty extensive. I'm not lying. So really look at, look at that information I sent out. We can submit up to five projects. Now, economic development is going to need some guidance, right? Um, and I don't know whether they'll take this on, so.
So this expression of interest that has to be filled out. Is that for each and every grant or just to to line us up for a few grant opportunities?
So what it what it does is you have to fill out an expression of interest for up to five projects. And if you look at the forms, they'll tell you that the the grants that you, this is required now, are is a Mass Works Grant. Housing Choice Capital Grants. Community Planning Grants. Rural Development Grants. Underused Properties. Mass Downtown Initiatives. A lot of this stuff is infrastructure related. Like, for example, water and sewer lines. Parking Management Studies. Zoning Review and Updates. You know, sidewalks, street improvements, any of that stuff. You need, you now have to fill out these forms. And they're, they're, like I said, they're pretty extensive. I mean, they're requiring, you know, like four, 5,000 words per description. It's not like one sentence and you're done.
And is that a description for each of five grants?
No, it's five projects.
Okay.
And then, see, they have to be projects that ultimately you would be interested in applying for these grants for assistance.
Well, some of the things you just mentioned, we've got sidewalks and disrepair. And we've got some housing issues that have been on the table for discussion. So a lot of the things you just mentioned, the things we've been looking at.
Correct, correct. So I think we have to do it. The question is, is do we try to fast track it and get it done by April 2nd? Or do we shelve it and not do it till maybe in the fall when they open it up again? We can't be doing all these things at the same time. And Brian will tell you. There's no way unless we like hit the lottery that we could probably do Mass Works. Because I tried to do one last summer.
Okay.
So that one's pretty much out. But some of the other ones, like zoning review and updates, that might be something that, you know, we can do. The Mass Downtown Initiative could potentially pay for the welcome signs that economic development would like to have.
One of the things that interested me, Rosemarie, was when you talked about water lines. You know, we know we have that situation. Was it Proctor Street where that water line is in desperate need of something? So I don't know, maybe maybe we don't have to pick five projects. Maybe we can just pick one.
Right. I mean, the the only problem with the water lines, the water and sewer lines have to be brand new connections. So I don't think Proctor would qualify. So they'd be new water line connections.
Okay, so like extensions of systems, then.
Right. You know, and like I said, the parking management plans, zoning review and updates, property acquisition. Yeah, I mean, it's all listed. If you if you go and look at the web links that I sent. You can just click on the different grants and they list all of these eligible projects. And and there are a lot of them that would be wonderful to do, but, you know.
We we don't have the bandwidth.
We either don't have the bandwidth, or I don't know whether or not these require matches or whether they require reimbursement. You know, grants where we have to front the money. I mean, that was the problem with Mass Works.
I don't remember which one it was, but when Doug was here, there was something. And we had to spend $1,500 just for the right to apply.
Oh, well, no, we're not, we're not there with this.
And there was no guarantee that you would get something in return.
Yeah, so give me an example. You know, the Mass Development Grant we just got? You can no longer apply for that grant unless you have an expression of interest on file.
Okay. Any idea what prompted them to start doing this? They getting too many applications?
They want to make, no, I think they want to make sure that you're doing your homework ahead of time. Like this past week, Brian and I got, or maybe it was the end of last week, can't remember. We we got a list of all the stuff we have to provide our consultants on the Mass Development Project. It's a substantial list. And thank goodness we have it. Or at least we hope we have it. Brian's bird dog and some stuff. I've got the easy part. But, yeah, I mean, that's the thing. They want to make sure that you know what you need ahead of time. And you've done the community engagement upfront, that you've exhausted all the community compact best practices having to do that would be applicable to that project. That you've changed your zoning, that you have, you know, a master plan, an approved master plan, things like that. Before you even apply for this stuff. So anyway, take another look at it. Maybe we get back on the 11th and let me know. I'll resend it out.
Okay.
So that you have a a more recent email.
And I just made a note to make sure to check it.
Yeah.
All right, now we're going to move on to reminders and announcements. Because when we're finished with those, we do have an executive session this evening. So Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Chairman, the next Board of Selectmen's meeting will be Monday, March 15th. Actually, that's not correct now, is it? So the next Board of Selectmen's meeting will be a working session on Thursday, March 11th at 11:00 AM at the Public Safety Building. Followed by the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Monday, March 15th, 2021, at 6:30 PM. And that will be a Zoom meeting. Open positions for the April 27th, 2021 Town Election and Town Caucus Information. The Selectmen, one open position for three years. Moderator, one open position for one year. Board of Health, two open positions for three years. Municipal Light, one open position for three years. Planning Board, one open position for five years. Library Trustee, two open positions for three years. Nomination papers are available through the Town Clerk's Office or on the town's website. Nomination papers must be submitted to the Town Clerk by Tuesday, March 9th, to close the business. Last day to withdraw or object to nomination papers is Thursday, March 11th, close of business. Any questions, please call the Town Clerk's Office at 978-827-4100, extension 3. Mr. Chair.
And I might, that after the caucus last week. All of the positions have somebody running for them, with the exception of the planning board. There's a vacancy on the planning board and nobody is showing any interest to run. So if anybody out there watching tonight has an interest in planning. Now's the time to go in and get nomination papers. And got to have them submitted to the Town Clerk by March 9th. Okay. Now we're going to be going into executive session under Mass General Laws, Section 38, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open, if an open meeting may have been detrimental to the effect on the government's bargaining or litigious position. And the chair so declares, we will only be coming out of executive session to a public session for adjournment.
So moved.
A couple more.
All right. So.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We got to vote on it.
Yeah, I second it.
Yep.
Okay, so Bill, you made the motion?
Correct.
All right. And it's seconded by Rosemarie. I'm filling out the executive session form. Okay, all in favor, Leo Jansons, yes?
Rosemary Meister, yes.
Bill Johnson, yes.
And that's at 8:12 PM that we're going into executive session. All right.
Okay, just gonna let a few people out.
Yep. All right.
Now I just have to stop recording.